We're calling the fighting commission meeting of May the 2nd, 2023 to order at 7:01. Roll call please.
Sorry, Katie Smidrowski here. Lucy Nolan-Dobert here. Rob Canal.
Present.
Craig Sims.
Here.
Chris Dobert.
Here.
And Rachel Whitsett is present.
And Jennifer is absent but trying to get here.
Yes.
A public hearing, lots of lit. 57914 Main Street, New Haven, Michigan, 48048, parcel number 26-06-33-259-008. Is there anyone here that would like to speak on that issue?
Here.
Please come forward and tell your name and maybe spelling it if you can.
Yalanda, Y-A-L-A-N-D-A, parcel. I just want to get the property split into two parcels.
Oh, you're the petitioner.
You're the property owner?
Yes.
You have all your documents submitted? What this portion of the meeting is, is a public hearing, so it say there's a neighbor that didn't like it, objects.
Sorry, I don't have a check. I was just here ready to talk with you.
Yeah, she did do that.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, good to see that.
Is there anybody else that would like to speak on the issue?
Yes, I would. My name is Doug, I'm here representing my daughter, who lives at 57915 Boots, which is the jointing property.
I'm sorry, Doug, what's your last name?
Steer, S-T-I-E-R. I would like to bring the attention that we have a flooding issue over there right now. There's water that collects in that piece of property and he has already started to fill in on the southern part of the property and starting to flood out my daughter's property. That's against the ordinance, against your ordinance. If they decide to build a home there, which is going to be above grade, they're going to have to regrade it and then they're going to have to have some sort of catch system on the soon, some sort of drainage to get the water off their property and help it grow. I have pictures before and after. There's also the issue of, and I checked under, I was looking through your ordinances and your list, do you allow garages to be built on, probably on the vacant land? That's an issue, you know what I'm saying? Because there's a garage there now, there's a building or a garage, we'll call it, that's on vacant land, if you make this split. So that's going to be, I don't know what your ordinances are pertaining to that, whether a person coming by a piece of property, build a garage or not a home.
That garage existed because there was a house there.
Correct. And I understand that and I understand why it is still there, but now with this split coming, you, you know, you're going to create another potential violation, in my opinion, if that's the case, okay? And again, if the petitioner decides to build a home, the planning or the building department's going to have to pay close attention to this flooding issue because it is an issue. Like I said, I do have pictures, I have video, the house that he already put up on, that's already on the other piece of parcel that he's going to split off. He has a sump pump in there and that thing is running quite bad. It shoots an inch and a half string of water out and right now he's got it piped towards the property question right now and it's just creating more water and that's our issue. We don't have a problem with the split, we honestly don't. I mean, if God bless, if you can build a home there, it's perfect, right? We just don't allow my daughter and her husband to have a flooding issue and we need to keep that in the forefront. So that's all I have as far as issues. But I would like to know if you could tell me, do you allow, I'll call it garages on vacant land? If I was to buy a parcel land, can I build a house on that land and not build a, and not build a home?
In a garage.
Or a garage, I mean, I'm sorry. If I build a garage, do I have to build a house? That's what I thought, I mean, I figured that would be the thing. And I do understand, Mr. Dobert, that that's been that way for, because that house burned down, I think, years ago.
Years ago.
Many years ago. And that building was just left there, but.
Yeah, it looks like, it looks like if you are looking to simply just build a garage by itself by a principal parcel, you can't just build a garage by itself. It has to be a single-family home or there's several other uses there.
And I tried to find it, I couldn't find it and I wasn't surfing very well, I guess. The next question is, can she, I'm assuming, can she have that building? Is that building going to need to be torn down? Because can you have a garage in front of your house? You follow what I'm saying? Unless she plans on incorporating that garage into her house, you know? But I think all the setbacks are okay, I'll adjust. She's had enough time to do it. But I was just wondering if, you know, if she's going to have to remove that and then build her house or how that can all work out, so.
Yeah, then they'll have to be looked at once a site plan or something.
Right, right.
On a space, I wouldn't believe that a house would be able to be constructed around the garage, but we have to see the details, site plan and everything else and make those final determinations.
Got you, got you. Okay. All right, just like I said, if you can, just make sure that my daughter and her husband will get flooded out and we appreciate it, okay? Thank you.
Is there anybody else that would like to speak on this issue before I bring us to the opposition or yet?
And we don't want that.
Okay.
Because she's my sister and she's going to be living there too.
Okay.
So Dad doesn't want that.
Okay, good.
So Dad already has a plan to fix it. There are, if you saw there were big holes in the streets.
Yeah, that was.
Can you move the rest of the chair though?
Do you want the, do you want the they want here?
Keep moving the video.
Oh, sorry.
But you guys are more than welcome, I'd love for you to.
Yes, there's already a plan in place to fix that because he doesn't, my father is the one who can be flooded out and he doesn't want.
I appreciate that.
There's already a plan in place to fix that situation so that we won't have anybody being flooded out because I can't afford to keep the sump pump running like this.
Is your development going on this, is that the reason for the lot split? What's the reason for the lot split?
Yeah, the reason for the lot split is because I have my house and my sister wants her house, so that's the reason.
So is your sister next door?
If she would be on.
The split.
The split part, a new house.
So she is the one currently under construction and then the one on Boots that they're asking to split is where her sister would be?
That's Lincoln, it's not Boots.
It's Lincoln.
Lincoln, I'm sorry, Lincoln. I'm looking right at Lincoln, it's on Boots.
And they're going to incorporate the garage into the house. So the existing garage will be stayed. Yeah, garage will be moved.
That is what we hope for, to incorporate it, but we're obviously at the mercy of yourselves.
So, Mr. Steer, is your daughter at the corner of Lincoln and Boots?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And so I'm confused where the sister lives there.
She's nowhere right now.
You're in the house directly next to her, she's in a house, a brand new house.
I think, I don't know.
She's here.
Yeah.
This is the house that just got built, this is the one where the sisters are going to be split.
Oh, you're going to build a house for her?
Yeah, that is what we intention and because of the fact that, though my property is basically flooding out my sister right now. Exactly. Their intention is everything's going to have to be regraded because of the fact that my father is not going to do that to his daughter. So it's going to have to be all redone. If you see, all the trees came down already, so that we could, you know, well, once the property is split, then that work will start. But that's going to have to be done and then there's also a plan in place about between the two houses having a spot that runs between the two and then getting drainage runoff. And don't pull me on any of this because I, but it would, basically her house wouldn't be affected because our two would run toward each other and then it would somehow hook into the correct drain off.
So right along the property line there, then the solid property line where you're soon to build a swale?
Yes.
Some sort of ditch, if you will.
Yes.
But now how are you going to get over the curb? Again, there's, you know, I, and I don't mean to talk out of school here.
No, that was.
Yeah, I had to cut up, get a cut up curb just to get into the road.
No, that wasn't a problem.
Yeah.
He just said.
Problem solved. So this would probably be on the next agenda since we have the public hearing and perhaps during that time, you can get with your dad and you and your sister and Steer's all together and work out something that is advantageous and let the engineer and the planner know before our next meeting where you guys ended up, if these things are all fixed.
Seems reasonable. Of course, today, good job.
So I'm just waiting for the.
What's the site plan? Is it just a building?
Just let me just, what do you want then?
Well, we need to know like.
Part of that would just be the lot split.
Yeah, that's all we're talking about.
That's all we're talking about.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We don't necessarily know your full, like, plan. This is strictly just.
For the lot split.
For the lot split, yeah.
And they're concerned, we're, we're actually, they're concerned that is not.
And all we're concerned about is, is your lot split could be dimensionally compliant? Will the parcel of land that is being created follow the schedule regulations that have like minimum area, minimum block width, minimum block depth? That is what we're looking at today, not necessarily building that below the.
Okay. Do we have that? We have that minimum stuff, right?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, we're discussing that now, it's part of the process.
Oh, okay. I apologize.
So, yeah, that's a question on the lot split.
Oh, sure.
Just because it's written, it's written this piece probably after the, once we said, I don't know, I believe, I mean, I believe that the, we may put the first option. Did they come to planning, was that a planning issue?
No, that goes to the building department.
That went to building department?
Plant, plant is only approved in the lot split.
Okay.
The construction and the drainage and all that, that goes to building department. We don't give a.
That was a corner lot, am I correct? Is that the way that was given? That's that one piece on the, or you're not looking at that at all?
Yes.
How was that ever done?
The, the one under construction?
Yes, yes.
Again, there's an application to the building department.
So that's what I'm saying, did they get, was it a special manager?
No.
No.
Why?
Because they would meet the front, they would meet the front for a corner lot, the setback, but they don't.
Building department.
You don't know?
No.
We don't, we don't say that, so you don't know?
We don't review that.
It has all the.
Okay. Only building.
All right, I see where you're going. Okay.
Building department.
Yeah, that's it.
So, um.
It is currently.
Yeah, it's still on it. Yeah.
Is there anybody else from the public that would like to be heard on this issue before we close the public hearing?
No, no, I see.
Hearing none, is appropriate for a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion to close public hearing at 11:15.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion passes.
Thank you.
Okay, so next is approval of the agenda. So the question here comes, where it is kind of on the agenda under your business?
It is on the agenda, it's just like taking away the words that's open here.
Yeah, and move it to your business.
No.
Oh, yeah, there's a.
Well, the word that concern is, I mean, we do have discussion in action, so. Is there any objection to removing set public hearing from the first part of the sentence? Any other changes to the agenda? Hearing none, your motion to approve has ended. Fair. Um, so it is on the agenda to approve this lot split tonight, so that it will be coming back up now.
Yeah.
You're not actually approved for the lot split yet.
Oh, okay.
What we did was the public hearing, so the public deferred on the issues. So we still have your items to discuss, so.
Okay.
Um, I believe there's a motion by.
Lucy, I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. So moving on to public comment on agenda items. Are there any comments from the public on agenda items? Hearing done? Oh, sure.
I just wanted to say, my name is Jacob Warner, I'm vice president of development with P K Companies, who are the owner of Perry Acres Apartments, and here to speak on that agenda item with the commissioners.
And you'll be allowed to speak on that issue, you may still petition when it comes up.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Um, next would be approval of the minutes. Meeting minutes, March 28th, 2023.
I can motion to approve the minutes from March 28th, 2023.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes six with one objection. Communications and correspondence and workshops, does anybody have anything? No? Matters of consideration, whole business, Perry acre apartments expansion, response to letter.
Would you like to? Oh, sure. So we had, we're trying to get the construction permit for Perry Acres, we need to have our site plan approved. And so we had been working with your group and had come to the March meeting. And there, I think, the only subset of issue that was outstanding was the requirement to install a sidewalk that would run along the right of way. That's not feasible for a number of reasons. The primary one is that there's a drainage ditch on the side of the right of way, so there's no way that we can install a sidewalk that would run along that. We are adding a sidewalk that will connect the right of way, the right of way along Ratchet to the sidewalk that circles our building, so our tenants will be able to have an accessible path from the apartments to, to Ratchet there. But there was a request in addition to that, to put the sidewalk on the right way and, like I said, that's not feasible. It would be possible to put a sidewalk running through our property, but I am, first of all, we're not entirely comfortable with that. The second item that's an issue with that is there's a very high cost of that. The financing that we have, this is affordable housing and so we have to, we're heavily regulated by the federal and state government in terms of what we can spend money on and how much we can spend. And to add that to our budget would be, it'd be about five percent of the total contract. So the total contract we have is about $1.8 million. We estimate that it would cost around $100,000 to install the sidewalk as well as relocate light poles that would have to be, that would be in the path of where the sidewalk would have to go. And so that would use up half of our construction contingency and it, it's just a hit to our budget that we're not able to absorb. So we're asking that that requirement be waived because we have a sidewalk that runs from Ratchet to our property. The other item that I did want to mention, we received a letter of determination from the village president in October of 2021 that said that the scope of work that we had did not require site plan approval. So we believe that it's our position that that letter of determination could be relied upon and we did rely upon as well as the state housing authority for the funds for this project. So, you know, we're trying to be good neighbors, we want to have a good development that needs local code, but we would really appreciate if you could work with us on this issue and not require an extension of sidewalk.
So at that time you had submitted documentation to the village, a site plan?
A very basic site plan. It wasn't a full submission, but we had discussed it, like, the only exterior modifications of the property is we're adding about 1,000 square feet to the laundry building to make it a community, to make it a community here. So there's no other exterior modifications, significant exterior modifications to be made to the building. Most, the vast majority of what we're doing is we're gutting the bathrooms and kitchens in the apartments, replacing all the appliances, replacing flooring, replacing the roof. So the vast majority of the money being spent here is to renovate the existing apartments.
Would our professionals like to interject anything?
I just have one question. Are you still open to the contract suggested in the letter you guys submitted to us that if the, I believe, I don't have a letter handy. I believe that it suggested that if there was development to the east or towards that, that you would be willing to put in the sidewalk.
That is not our first preference, just because it creates an issue where we have to be aware of other development that's ongoing that could happen 10, 15, 20 years down the road and we would need to come up with whatever the cost is at that point. So that would be our first choice, but that would be an alternative that we can consider. We would have to look at the language of such a contract. But we did, we did propose that as an alternative, so we're open to that.
Well, that could create a potential problem. If the developer to the east is going to report to put in a sidewalk, that's going to lead to nowhere. Right. And, and if their cost is $100,000 a day, two years from now, to the point, $150,000?
I couldn't tell you.
But, yeah, my point being is, you know, I mean, you're, I'm not going to get it cheaper at a later date if some development does come in.
I mean, that's a pertinent point, but it doesn't affect the. I, I guess, you know, if we were to do that project, we would rather do that 10 years from now when the other property is developed so that the sidewalk has use rather than putting it in now, but we don't believe that it would really add much to the property. Because we already have an accessible path for residents to access Ratchet. We're adding a sidewalk that will go from ours, the sidewalk that surrounds our buildings will have an accessible path to Ratchet. So our residents will be able to access that.
So are the buildings.
Adding a sidewalk on James Curtin, I'm sorry.
Are the buildings connected by a sidewalk now?
Yes. We'll have a sidewalk that wraps around each building and then connects some parking lines.
So to go from.
From building to building.
From building to building, you actually got to go up to the street?
Correct. It does, you currently, but we're adding an access point from the front building to Ratchet.
From the front building to Ratchet.
Correct.
But to other two buildings, you have to go up the street?
Uh, no, if I may, I didn't say it right here. I believe that's the place.
You know, when you do these projects, don't you check the local ordinances to make sure that you're bringing it up to, when you're doing that? Now, ordinance, it is clear that there has to be a sidewalk, I mean, that's where this all comes up.
Oh, sure, but we also rely on the fact that the village gave us a letter saying we didn't need to do a sidewalk. So that, we wouldn't be here having this conversation had that letter been added.
But that's. My question is, does Ann or did Ann have the people authorized to write such a letter?
No.
Bypassing, you know, planning ordinances?
No.
And, I mean, you guys must do this every day, right? This is your.
Oh, certainly. Yeah, we did site plan approvals.
And would the site plan have to be submitted to an individual or to a group?
We did not, we did not spare a site plan. We discussed with the village president the scope of work that we were performing.
Excuse me, sir, could I ask which village president you spoke to?
The previous, her name is, excuse me a moment.
Did she speak to the previous president prior to her?
If you, just give me a moment, I can send you the person that signed the letter.
She wants to say her name, is she Ann? And when did you speak to her?
It's back in October of 2021, before we even applied for tax credits.
We don't worry.
Okay, has your, has your plan changed from October 21st until now? What you proposed to her, you gave her a layout, you gave her a plan of what you had, were pointing to do, wanted to do with the expansion?
I would have to go back and look to see exactly what was submitted, but we certainly had a conversation, at least verbal conversation, about what we were performing. And then we were ready to do the apartments and then we're adding on to the laundry building.
Because as far as I know, if you were just, weren't doing the additions to the laundry building, you were fixing a roof, doing siding windows, everything inside, you wouldn't be here, you wouldn't need to.
I know.
That would have been necessary, except that you were doing the addition, which opens up the site plan and causes them to have to put in a sidewalk.
Well, but we had, we were required all along to do the addition. We have to, as part of the funding that we got from Michigan, we had to add a community here. And so we had, we didn't, we would have to get rid of an apartment to do that or extend the laundry building, that was a better, better solution. But that was contemplated all along, we had to do that or create a quit to do that. So that, that would have been part of the discussion. I could go back and try to dig up what was said. I guess, and I'm an expert on your zoning ordinance, but I would also make the argument that a 1,000 square foot addition to a laundry building that is at the very rear of the site, I wouldn't normally see that trigger a site plan review because it's the minimus compared to the rest of the property. But, you know, that's just what I've seen before. So like I said, you know, we want to be good neighbors, we want to do, we can't comply with ordinance, I just, it's our position to know that what we're adding to the property does improve access and provide access for all of our residents to access the right ways. And it's just very difficult to add a sidewalk when we have a drainage ditch right on the side of the road. I don't, frankly, I don't think it's appropriate to have a public sidewalk run through a private apartment complex. Because that's what we have to do, we would have to have to go through our property. And so, you know, we would have pedestrians walking through our property, but at any point in time.
That's a public rule.
I understand, James Curtin, I was a public.
Yes, yes.
I would have understood that. But I agree, we can't put it where there's a drainage ditch, so you would have to want our property to be able to install right now.
Do you happen to, I'm sorry.
Yes, sir.
Do you happen to know the date that you applied on?
October of 2021.
Sir, then, would they be required to put sewage or draining along that, that property now that they've opened up a site plan? Would that, is that part of, would that be part of a requirement? It's not just a sidewalk, then, if they feel they can't build it along the drainage ditch, would they be required to remove the ditch and put a drainage along there?
Yeah, let me clarify a couple of things. When you, when you do work on only buildings, you're not doing any improvement on the site. In this case, they are improving the site, which triggers a site plan. And part of the zoning ordinance, the sidewalk is required on both. the sidewalk is required on both sides of the road. Public road, for any development. Okay? So to answer your question, it was offered to, I think, a meeting or two ago, that the village will accept one side of sidewalk, one side of the road. So to answer your question about the ditch, the drainage ditch, if you're putting the sidewalk on top of where the ditch is located, you have to enclose it. The drainage has to go somewhere. But it's, it's not required that you be exactly at the we gave them the flexibility and we suggested that they move the sidewalk either to the north side or behind the ditch on the south side. So there are options. You don't have to enclose the ditch.
So there isn't a problem per se putting the sidewalk along the ditch?
I don't see a problem. We talked about that, about south side of the road. And moving it inside so that it doesn't affect the ditch, it doesn't affect the light homes. Just move the sidewalk in, put your own level ground.
I'm asking that question because he wasn't here when Sir Matt said those things, so I wanted you to hear it. You had some other gentleman.
Oh, yeah. Sam was here and you didn't make it this evening, but I spoke to him at length about the discussion. And our letter that we had sent proposing the contract addressed that by saying some of the same things that I've said. Number one is that it's very costly and very real budget. And it's, it would have to go on our property. Yes, it's on the other side of the drainage ditch. But that's out of the public right way. That's on our private property. So we would have to have a public sidewalk there. The other thing is we couldn't put it on the north side of the property because we don't own that property. That's owned by the car dealership. So, you know, we also
You'll be within the road right on the north side. That's a public right of way. Not behind the wall, in front of the wall. He's still within public right of way. That's not owned by the dealership. That's owned by the, by the village.
The other issue then creates for us, because we're regulated, the money that we receive from the state and the federal government does not allow us to make improvements to property that we don't own. I'm not sure that we can do that with the money that we have. I can speak to my attorney to try to figure that out. Generally, they very much frown on us spending dollars that are supposed to be spent for affordable housing to improve a different piece of property that we don't own.
But if you move the sidewalk to the south side, you would onto your property.
Yes.
Now you may let it go into your property.
But we already have a sidewalk that services all of our residents. So
That doesn't have a, no, James Curtin drive.
Respectfully, sir, I mean, we have, we have a sidewalk that wraps all the way around the building.
I'm looking at a Google search. So the only one that you're going to connect is this very front one to those sidewalk along Ratchet. These two back here are not going to connect to anything.
There's also going to be added walkways. If you look at our site plan, we have, well, I guess that's just the accessible path. But there is, this does show, the dotted line shows that there's an accessible path from each of the sidewalks to, throughout the property. So, I mean, that
Those are internal sidewalks.
Technically exist now because of parking lot from touching sidewalk to sidewalk.
I'd be surprised, why not be surprised that if you don't, that we allow them to not put a sidewalk in, then all future developers, how can we enforce it? I'm also reading that letter, Mr. Sherman, that Anne Redmore signed. It says in one paragraph, it says, "Based on the information received, the proposed rehab of the existing structure will not modify the existing site configuration." In this case, it's not, it is modifying by adding that community and adding the sidewalks, the internal sidewalks and the place gates and all that. Those are modifications. So it's not building work only. If it was building work, this is very true.
And there was nothing submitted, so we don't know what she saw or didn't see or
I have not seen a site plan until it was officially submitted to the planning commission.
Nothing to John or Plan B?
Not in July. This letter is dated July 22 of 2021.
Which we had to add, I might have reported applying back to work.
You know, you see where we're standing, where it's an ordinance that we have that you have to comply to, we have to comply to, just like Mr. Dilbert said. It leaves us open for more issues as well.
Is there a reason why the ordinance didn't apply to the car dealership?
There is no car dealership.
Or, I'm sorry, the property on the other side of the wall. I mean, that is part of the property that there was a sidewalk put in on that side of the property.
They're not touching James Curtin's ground. You have a wall.
So who owns the strip of land between the wall and the
It's not a road. That's what you're referring to. They're not, they're not on a road heading east.
And you were allowed, you were allowed to build your left sidewalk at that time?
I understand that you had ordinance. And I understand that the letter that was written back in 2021 probably didn't address everything it should have addressed. Should have addressed. I guess I'm just asking for some leniency because it's about 5% of our project budget. I mean, that's, it's a lot of money that we're going to have to spend on the sidewalk that isn't going to be used to improve the apartments for the residents there. And I just it's also difficult because we relied on that letter. And the state housing authority relied on that letter. One of the things that is required is that we have an approved site plan or know that it's not required. And it was the understanding that we had that it wasn't required. So, you know, we're acting under that assumption. So, I mean, I understand if that's the position you're going to take. But I guess I would just please ask that you consider the fact that our residents will have an accessible right of way to Ratchet. So I don't know who's going to use the sidewalk. I think it's a significant amount of money and it's through public property, through private properties where it's going to have to be built. I just don't think that it's reasonable that it should be required. And I also don't think that adding 1,000 square feet on the laundry building is, is a true change in the configuration of the site. We didn't add any buildings. All we did was add on to one building. So, you know, I don't think that that is a material change in the configuration of the site that would typically require a site. So, that's just my opinion, but I think I understand you have to do what you have to do. You have to follow your ordinances. You know, we we respect that and we want to be good neighbors. So we'll do what we have to, but I just, I think it's a significant burden that you're putting on affordable housing property that is serving folks that are very low income that can't afford to pay rent, a marquary apartment. We just want to get the rehab done and get the project underway so that we can deliver that. So we appreciate your consideration.
Did you check with local contractors? Because the amount that you're pulling seems
Yes.
It's an ordinance of
J.D. Fisher is our, is our main contractor and that's what he's telling us. It's going to cost us to put that in.
Well, he's, I don't know who he is, but
Okay. Do you have another contractor that you should be talking to?
Yes, Mr. Dilbert, he's willing to provide him a
We've got miles of our sidewalk in this community and we don't have to say those kind of reasons.
Okay.
I understand you're under a deadline to get this started or approved.
Yes, I mean, I paid Mr. Six Thousand dollars last week to extend our tax credits because we weren't close. So we want to go permanent. I can't quote my findings without
And how long did you extend it for?
It's extended for 12 months, but that was the only option.
Are your, are your grants collected between the two? Are they independent?
They're independent projects.
Okay, so this isn't wholly dependent?
Is there anything else you could add, Sir Matt, or John? Is there anything, anybody else on the table would like to question or add? Anyone like to make a motion? I would make a motion to deny, as it does meet ordinance.
Excuse me. I'm sorry, if you would like to cancel the request, or I mean, I don't know if we can table it or come back or
I would be willing to table it if you would like to continue with this.
I mean, we needed approved site plan. We don't want, I guess if it's denied, you may have to start from square one, or can we give you an amended site plan?
It is denied, it's done.
No, if it's denied, then you have to make application again. So what you're trying to do is table it so you'll have more time to find a solution.
We would like the opportunity to amend our site plan.
I would rescind the motion if Okay, I rescind that motion and make a motion to table this until we come to a resolve. All those in favor? Actually, this is probably a roll, do let's do a roll call for this, please, Richard.
Rob Mel?
Yes.
Lucille Dilbert?
Yes.
Katie Sandrowski?
Yes.
Sunebe Bradford?
Yes.
Craig Sims?
Yes.
Chris Dilbert?
Yes.
The item is tabled with a 720.
Six to one. Rachel Hodeina.
Oh, you did? I'm sorry. I apologize. Thank you.
I think, you know, while we're sitting here, let's not just let them walk out the door and actively have a conversation so we can figure out where we're heading with this. As far as like, do you want to work with the village as far as getting contractors and maybe some different rates? Do you want to just be left to sort of figure this out on your own? I don't, I don't want leave you. I mean, obviously the direction is that we'd like the sidewalk. Would you like to work with the village in terms of getting a more affordable, feasible contractor or no?
We're certainly open to any ideas, so
Okay. I just want to, you know, let you know that that communication exists and all of that.
But then the body is amenable to having a special meeting if you come up with a plan that, I mean, we don't want to hamper you at all in your project. So if you come up with a resolve before the next meeting, you could petition that to have a special meeting.
I think at some point, Sir Matt and the contractor or someone should meet on site and do a walkthrough because there's obviously some confusion as to the location of the sidewalk. There's some options that someone is not either share or don't put it in this plan.
Or respectfully, your idea of what is required is different than what our civil engineer and our contractor are telling us is required. So I can't, I'm not an expert. I'm a finance guy. I'm not a builder, so I can't tell you how to build a sidewalk, but, you know, I got to rely on the experts and they've bid the rest of the job and the rest of the job makes financial sense. So when they tell me that they have to use half of our construction contingency to put in the sidewalk, that's a serious problem. I can't close that financing guy. I have to figure out a way for that.
It sounds like they are We've still been checking ordinances. I mean, they should have looked at our ordinances before they
But they certainly
Yeah, please don't get this the wrong way. I mean, we try to help, but we cannot waive any requirement. And cost is not a hardship. And that's what Robert is trying to say, that somebody should have done their homework. But going from here, we will work with you to find a solution that satisfies the village.
Okay. I'd like to have a meeting on site with our contractor and talk to it.
Absolutely.
Who do I contact for that?
You could contact, do you want to share that information, Sir Matt? John, did you want to share that, please?
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
New business, D. Sign ordinance amendment consideration discussion and action.
Okay, I put this on the agenda in regards to the way our current ordinance is defining signs. It doesn't allow corner lots to have a sign presence on both sides. So we'll look at 26 in Ratchet as the example at this time. So that property or home or building can only have property facing west, on the facing Ratchet side, and is limited on signage if you're coming up 26. So he could choose one way or the other. So that individual is currently coming in, made a request to ZVA due to the limited signage heading north and on that facing building, or that facing side of the building. So I guess I wanted to bring it up to see, do we want to consider amending our sign ordinance for corner lots only on that main signage? Not, you know, additional, additional, any type of other signage. Just that main signage? Or do we want to say we only have a few properties and the community and keep them going to ZVA?
I mean, we do have a monument sign on each road that he utilizes for the business.
Does he have a monument sign on the one side?
Oh, Ratchet, just on Ratchet.
Isn't there a sign over by the
No, he's got nothing on the south south side.
And so is the proposal to, because there's an entrance there, or is it just
It's just if you're driving
You're in it for both roads.
Yeah, you're doing it on both roads.
So that would be the criteria, is if the sign that can be seen.
Correct.
So would that sign
I believe, I've not seen the ZVA request, but I believe he is asking for to duplicate the sign that he already has on Ratchet side to also be on the 26 side.
The monument side?
No, the mounted, the mounted sign. So now, you know, we could also open up the conversation to the monument sign as well. Like, or like I said, we can just leave it where they go to ZVA and deal with it case by case. We do have other properties that could, down the road, be impacted. But they are, you know, who would then, there's, but they are
What do other communities do for quarter businesses for signage?
Typically, there are kind of almost like a performance standard where it's based on, say, the lot size, amount of like linear feet of like frontage of those two different corners. And then how many entrances you have for that site. There's typically different, you kind of apply, and then that kind of determines how many signs you can have or it could be and those type of, type of things for corner lots specifically.
But I would mean if you specifically call out like a corner lot?
Yeah, it would be some type of double frontage thing, a corner lot, or multiple entrance type standard.
I mean, I do see the entrance portion of that because there is a set of doors on that other side.
I'm not supposed to take a look. I think maybe one other community's doing, seeing how we can incorporate into ours.
Yeah, but this was more a discussion to see if we wanted to pursue that. We started at the next meeting as far as looking at some ideas and such and hopefully
I can bring examples to the last meeting of what other communities did and see how that would potentially apply in new, in new neighborhood and very sites that would pay out.
Is anybody opposed to looking into it? Thank you, John.
Okay, so there is no action on this issue. We're just going to move along. Planner's report?
Nope.
Last one.
Oh, I'm very sorry. Oh, I'm very sorry. I skipped to B over. Okay, item number one under old business, well, actually, item number two. So the side ordinance was two, this was one, basically, or this was called two, since that's the order of painting. Okay, lots split land combine 57914 Main Street, New Haven, Michigan 48048. Parcel 26-06-33-259-008. Discussion in action. Are there any questions for the petitioner? Is there anything added from our professionals on the lot split?
As far as lot split, they meet the report.
Yeah, our review, they, both parcels would meet the minimum, surpass the minimum standards that are required for those parcels as of two districts.
I do have a question. So if we split these lots, which makes the lone garage all by itself, are we creating an issue since it's not part of the garage, part of the other property that belongs to the other property? Are we creating that lot with the garage as a non-conforming?
So the structure on it would be non-conforming if we did the lot split. The interesting situation is the lot split ordinance strictly talks about creating compliant parcels. It does not go into our set structures of those parcels, compliance with the setbacks standards. That's something that we may want to look at in amending and in the ordinance in the future to change that and do not create non-conformities or expand non-conformities. But as the ordinance is written, that is necessarily common to be considered. The parcel itself is, the two parcels are going to be compliant in terms of lot direction standards.
So could we put a contingency? Because their goal apparently is to knock that garage down and build a house there.
No, I think they want to add a house on the garage.
Oh, you're keeping the garage where it's at?
Is that what we would like to do, but we do have to take it down because that's what you guys communicate to us.
I think when the site plan is submitted to the building department, that's when that determination can be made as far as setbacks and all the other things that come into play.
Correct. That has nothing to do with the spot lots, but all that construction and setbacks that goes to the plant, to the building department, part of the plot plan is submitted.
My concern was just that we're creating an issue, a non-conforming issue with the lot split.
And John had on the note, we're only looking at the lot splits, but as far as non-conforming, a pre-existing condition, the ordinance is not touched that.
And the property that was just developed, I don't see a sidewalk along Lincoln there. And I would think there'd be a sidewalk in front of this new apartment, two. So is that part of the requirement, would still be implicit? I'm wondering if the sidewalk is going to fit because we're in garages.
Again, that's, we don't review these plot lines. You're the only community that we don't provide the service to. Building Department does that, and I hope they make that requirement.
Okay, is there any other discussion on the man? Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
We approve the lot split request.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Dilbert, seconded by Mr. Sims. All those in favor?
Aye.
This is the lot split.
Roll call.
Chris Dilbert?
Yes.
Craig Sims?
Yes.
Lucy Nolan Dilbert?
Yes.
Katie Zandrowski?
Yes.
Svenneby Rata?
Yes.
Rob Knell?
Hmm, yes.
And Rachel Wences, yes.
Okay, motion passed. You guys are on with your lot split.
Thank you.
Now we move on to planner's report.
I think, just to reiterate, we researched the sign situation. I think we should take a look at the lot split points strictly for the structure aspect of the business. I've seen the other communities where it is something where you cannot create a non-conforming. And I think that would be appropriate to have an ordinance.
Would it require that the rise of taking down the last bit of the...
I don't know. I mean, that would be, I don't know if that'd be considered a take use or whatever. If we can make that a condition to remove the structure. I just, I think that in that situation, you would better not approve the split because of that unless that was rectified before the application was... So I feel like if they're going to come here, that somewhere, you can definitely deny it and then they would rectify what you get why is, I guess.
So some community, if I may, some communities require as part of a lot split to put the existing condition and the proposed condition. And part of that, it would be like some sort of a site plan review, you know, along with the lot split. Similar, very similar to this case. So if this was, I'm not going to name the community, if, in certain community, this would be denied because it would create a non-conforming issue.
So does anybody object to John and Sarah coming back to us so that we do address these issues properly in the future as an amendment towards the ordinance?
No, and I would also like to, I was gonna actually, are we still, I'll just get it from...
We're on the planner's report.
So this is just a discussion.
Okay, yeah, I would just like to expand on that. And you mentioned something that you, we do not engineer-y wise review plot plans. Is that what you're saying? You said that earlier, that we're one of the few communities that you don't.
Yeah.
I wanted to, just can you elaborate on that?
So when a site plan comes in for a single family home, it goes directly to the building department. And the building department reviews that without involving us. I'm not sure if, John, do you receive that? So they review the setbacks, and they also review the drainage and the sidewalk requirements and all. We do not get involved.
Is that something that you would commonly be doing in other communities as well, or not?
I feel like in administrative circumstances, we at least take a look at to make sure that the building and all of these looked at, that those elements are incorporated. Although it wouldn't be as thorough or review as a whole, very much recommendation, but we would at least have come across the basket.
So in general, it's been working out for the village because these single homes are part of a subdivision. And the subdivision has a master grading and a master sidewalk layout and a master utility. So it was simple. But for a single lot like these, this would consider to be a plot plan and usually reviewed by the engineer and the planner, and E W separately.
They need to look at some additional language to include you in these type of single...
Yeah, just one on... Yeah, and I guess I would also, just on, you know, some other... Let me just hold this for a second.
Because if the drainage, you know, potentially could be an issue, you know, the building department is not really done, you know...
And years ago, we worked on step-by-steps for the building department to follow. And maybe that's another place to, we should relook at that, to add that type of services to the checklist. Because obviously Becky's running off of, you know, those lists that we made for whatever comes to her.
Yeah, part of our contract with the village is to provide us services. And we actually have a fee already set up by the board to review that. But because this is an already existing procedure with the building department, it never came back to us.
So do we have to do it within the zoning ordinance to create that ability? Or is it just something we would ask the council to approve?
Council already approved it.
Oh, it's all...
There is a plot plan review fee.
So how do we activate, is what I'm asking? Do we as a, take a vote as planning commission that we want this done?
This is more internal procedures, I guess.
So we're just overstepping it, basically?
Yeah, if the board would like this new procedure, you can just notify the building department. That's the way it's gonna happen from now on.
Anybody have a motion?
They did a single lot outside of a subdivision.
Single lot outside of subdivision.
It's a procedural...
I mean, I guess...
Because they all are very simple. And they already have preset grades and it's part of the master grading and utility plan. Either way, we're fine. I mean, literally takes us really quick, the same day for a lawyer to return those spats.
I would be curious, because it was mentioned during the public hearing, that the drainage between these two lots, you know, there's gonna be some sort of swell created and, or some sort of catch basin put in. You know, we gotta make sure that that's done correctly. And where's it gonna be tapped into? And make sure we don't have a cross-connected issue with sewer line and not a storm line.
That's, that's, that's really the purpose of a big plot plan.
Because I don't think there's a storm line on that road.
Well, there is a six inch, I believe, on the...
Is there?
Yeah. That they can tap into. And normally with the old single lots, you shoot drain to the road and the road system picks up. But it needs to be graded correctly and the swell between the lots, or nobody's sending water to the neighbors.
Right. We don't want standing water, we don't want, you know, we don't want kind of mosquito, you know...
Resort.
I'm gonna ask another question about, I'm assuming with John, no, but are you contacted if there's ever any changes within a PUD of which? So I just got some... So some properties have been... There were common areas, but yet utilized, like changed from the PUD. So I'm just gonna use, just because it's irrelevant, the back half of the Amherst, that extra open area. There was a pool there and all that, and all that. So, but that's a common, a common element back in the day. I'm just using it as an example so that I don't touch on where I'm going with it. But if someone was coming in and just take over that PUD, there's some language written in these master deeds that suggests that on common elements, landscaping areas and such, that they are open to modification. Do you ever get contacted if PUDs are modified in that way? Does that make sense? Am I making sense?
Yes. And I think if I understood your question, the common areas with the flexibility, they always have some kind of flexibility. So if the place again is here and they decide to build it here, that's fine. But to change the use, it has to come back to the site plan and board. And I mean, planning commission and board.
Okay, so, because I'm reading, if you don't mind, I'll just bring it up because I know it's been discussed. So I'm reading from a master deed, so designation of convertible areas of modification of units and common elements. All units and general common elements in the project are convertible areas within which the individual units may be modified, provided herein. Developers right to modify units. Developer reserves the right in its sole discretion during a period ending later than six years from the date of recording this master deed to modify the size and/or location of individual units within convertible areas.
Somebody reviewed this and approved it. This is very, it gives the developer a lot of flexibility.
It does, yes, and that's why I'm asking, so that does not touch you back?
It's a bad setup.
But it's also not voted on by the village or the planning commission, these master deeds. These are just things they make up. We don't get to vote on them.
Yes, you do. Part of the PUD package that you receive initially.
But that was different, that, when that language is brought up when we did Pembroke, not that particular language, but language within the master deed. We're told that we couldn't touch those things, that the master deed is their master deed.
Sure you can. You're approving it.
Well, that's, that's what I'm talking about, is there was direction not to touch that.
That's incorrect, because if, let's say you approve a site plan and it has 200 lots with 20 acres of condominium, okay? And that's, that was approved via planning, and then it goes to council for a final PUD approval, okay? But you have an exhibit, and then the master deed says something otherwise, and you're not allowed to vote on it. Then that gives, because then the document gets recorded and it's part of the development.
I agree with you, but the attorney at that time was no.
That doesn't make sense.
I don't, I can take it either, but I'm not the attorney.
I'm trying to remember making some changes to the master deed when it went to council for approval. Do you recall master deed coming to us? Because I don't.
I don't remember reviewing.
I don't ever recall seeing a master deed on our approval, in regards to recent...
But I do agree with Sir Mike's assumption, like that's part of the whole PUD development process and negotiation or anything else, because that's part of the legal contract and binding document to develop what you agree to.
I'm pretty sure the origin was made to convert master deed at the council table.
So again, just to clarify, a PUD or a condominium or any, any development that comes with a document, a deed document, you have to receive an exhibit, which have the plans and the restrictions or the covenants, which is the master dock, master condominium, documents or master PUD that comes to planning, and then planning review, make recommendations to the board. Board approves it, it gets recorded with the land. Any deviation, any changes, has to come back the same route and get re-recorded as a first and second amendment, third, so on and so forth. So it's always recorded. You cannot just change things.
So I guess I might say to this, is that maybe we need to look at what we are requesting at this table having not received the master deed in our process. I don't believe we've received it any way, at least recently.
Master deed, it's probably been recorded with the condominium, you can ask for a copy.
Right, but we should be asking for it whenever someone should come in for a PUD. We should be requesting it at that point in time, not necessarily...
You would ask for an amendment to the master deed. Every change that comes in, you would ask for an amendment for the existing deed and exhibit to be recorded. This way, it's current, every change.
But once...
But I think you're saying when we get these...
Like, yeah, so if somebody comes in, we should be looking at these master deeds.
Oh, of course, part of your records, you should have a copy.
But before we even approve a site plan, we should be approving the site plan and the master deed. That's what I'm asking.
If it's an existing master deed, you cannot, it's already...
No, no, I'm just talking, it's too late. I mean, obviously, for what I'm referring to.
For a new development.
For new development, we just need to be more diligent in receiving those.
Absolutely. So we're talking about a current incident.
Um, I don't know, potentially, I don't know, because...
Or we're trying to rewrite history.
No, I'm not trying to rewrite history. I'm moving forward. I think we need to do better. I mean, we can't rewrite history, so it's what it is. I just wanted some clarity that, you know, we could, that's something we have a say in. And, you know, while I sat here, you know, PUDs or otherwise, I've never had a master deed come across the table, so...
So perfect example for you, we have a potential residential development that is trying to... If all the elements are in favor, water, sewer capacity, storming, roads and all that, when they come in, a multi-residential, it would be under either a condominium or subdivision or a PUD. Any of those will have, like I explained before, an exhibit, which are the plans, and a master deed, a master dock. And that comes into the planning commission for review. It's actually, this body will review it, the planner, the engineer, and the attorney. Will review all that to protect the village.
Did you, or if you don't mind me asking, was that process done? Did yourself, you've already stated you have not reviewed a master deed. Have you reviewed, we'll just use our past, our Pembroke. Are you, did you review our master deed with the Pembroke expansion?
I have not, when we took over, this was already...
No, I'm talking about the new one.
The new one, we made a comment in our... The new one, we made a comment in our review letter that needs to be amended to accommodate the new changes.
And then obviously, no one else has legal reviewed it or not.
As a resident, I have an amended master deed.
It was before council in July of '21. What about you?
So does it skip over us by our processes and go to you guys and not us? That's what, I guess that's what I'm asking, like, oh, I want to get this straight so we can fix it.
It should.
Because how did we not get it, and I'm not questioning you, and how did it end up there but not here? I guess is a question we need to ask and find out the answer to.
They may have still worked on it, because remember, they were talking about who's the mother beauty and who's the child?
Yeah.
Oh, they got to get combined.
The merging of the two, yeah.
So we have, we have not seen that document, I have not seen it, I don't think John, so you can do it.
So with us already approving the site plan and whatever they present, is it open to changes? If we haven't seen it, is, or did we say yes to it, I mean, I wasn't saying it, did we say yes to it blindly by approving your site plan?
Well, that, that one did not modify completely, I think we requested the amendment to be officially submitted. Not, not to re-renew the master doc.
Right.
Right, only the amendment that allows that phase to come in.
Okay.
But it was a totally separate subdivision. And it came and dissipated, ownership changed, all those things changed over time. Pretty, you know, it's still a model, it's a model, but when they first created that PUD, they abandoned it. They, the village owned that property, so...
Are we talking north of 27 or south of 27?
South of 27. We're talking grass shit, awful grass shit.
Okay, so that...
So wouldn't that have been a whole new master deed?
Only the exhibit and the amendment, because the master deed will remain the same. The amendment will allow, it was denser before, now others. They're more open and bigger lots, and the layout has changed. But that's, that's the only change, all the other divines is already approved.
Thank you.
Okay, public comments on non-agenda items?
If I may, I'm going to spill a hair here a little bit, you already approved the lot split, which is great. I'm going to ask a couple of questions, if you don't mind. Number one is, a non-conforming lot, can you impose, when you say you're okay with a lot split, can you impose sanctions or items on that, saying, okay, you have six months to get this done? You know, is that a possibility? Because, again, they don't want to flood her out, and that's great, and we're all working together on that. But if something happens and they can't build their building, it's still going to run water over to her property unless they do go in on this and get the work done. My question again is, can you impose sanctions on this, okay, the building? If you don't have a house built a year, that building needs to come down. The building right now is at grade level. So if they do any improvements to the land, it's good, the building, right now the building is watering it. So I mean, it's, it's almost like you're going to have to turn it down anyway, but, again, I'm not an engineer, so I can't say that. But I was just kind of wondering about that, is if there's some sort of sanctions that you could put on that at one point in time, you know, when you're in the process of approving a land split? You know, is there something that you can say, you know, you have to just, and I'm not looking for an answer, I'm just kind of throwing that question out there, so... And again, as far as a timeframe on getting this taken care of? Because right now, it's, there's a bunch of water over there, we're looking at getting some more rain, and it's not good right now. So if you get a chance, we drive by it, we'll see it, okay? That's all, thank you.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to speak on that? Okay. Call from the table to address that, didn't we, we have... I mean, people are responsible for the property variables, right? I mean, we have ordinances in place, so if any property, whether it's vacant or what, and it's causing an impediment to the neighborhood, we have the ability to, within our... No, 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 but it's in our ordinance to, so you would bring those things to the building department and ask that they be enforced for your protection. Anybody else for call from the table? Hearing none, we'll entertain our adjournment.
Call from the adjournment, eight sixteen, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Close, we are adjourned.